Praise and glory for your word declares that when the righteous are in charge, the city will rejoice. Let Beaumont rejoice. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen, amen. Please join us in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minister Williams, thank you so very much for that beautiful prayer. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Protim Dureo.
Present.
Councilmember Gitz, absent. Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Felschah.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Today we have one recognition and one proclamation in honor of Women's History Month. Today, we will be recognizing the Junior League of Beaumont. And I will read the proclamation as follows. Whereas Junior League of Beaumont has been in our area for seventy-seven years, enriching the lives of the community. Whereas in nineteen forty-six, Junior League of Beaumont became a member of the Association of Junior Leagues International Incorporated. Whereas Junior League of Beaumont is comprised of a diverse group of unstoppable, empowering women with a common desire to make Beaumont a better place to live. Whereas the league has not only provided volunteer and financial assistance to numerous organizations in need, but has been the driving force in establishing community assistance, which consists of historical and cultural, as well as educational organizations that are still in operation today. Some of these include the Beaumont Children's Museum, Buckner's Children and Family Services, Southeast Texas Family Resource Center, Women and Children's Shelter, Young Audience Incorporated, Southeast Texas Community Health Clinic, Creative Play Park, and Mickey Mahaffey Children's Advocacy Center, Inc. Whereas on Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, we recognize and honor Junior League of Beaumont during the month of March, Women's History Month, for all of their extraordinary accomplishments and contributions to the city of Beaumont that helped shape and strengthen female leaders and future leaders in our community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Robin Muton, mayor of the city of Beaumont, do recognize Junior League of Beaumont and thank them for all of the wonderful work they do in our community. And accordingly, I, Mayor Muton, has set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed this day, signed, Mayor Robin Muton. And accepting the proclamation is the Junior League President-elect, Sarah Norman. If you'll please come forward and bring anyone with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Muton, for having us and recognizing the Junior League of Beaumont. The Junior League has been around since nineteen forty-six, making this our seventy-sixth year in Beaumont. Our mission is to advance women's leadership for meaningful, meaningful community impact through volunteerism, collaboration, and training. This year, our one hundred and twenty-five active members have shared their time and talents with our six community projects: Transitioning Youth, Service Squad, Abolish, Healthy Behaviors, and our newest project, The One, which stands for our nonprofit Elevated, where we have been working with the Beaumont Farmers Market this year. It's especially exciting because we got to help them roll out their SNAP program. Additionally, our thirty-four provisional members have completed their project, Packet, supplying five hundred hygiene bags to Vincent Middle School's sixth graders. We also have a hundred and ninety-six sustaining members in our league currently. Our community assistance funds continue to issue grants to local nonprofits. This year, with the continued success of our fundraisers, Main Street Market and Dancing With The Stars, we were able to give back over a hundred thousand dollars into our community between grants and projects. If you either sponsored or attended those events, we thank you greatly for your support. Speaking of the farmers market, I met a woman there this year when I was volunteering, and she said she had joined the league but then had to drop out. So of course, I asked her why, what happened? And she said she had to go back to work following the birth of her child, and you weren't allowed to be in the league and have a job both. Ladies, how times have changed. Presently, our Junior League members are not only a diverse group of local business owners and employees, but many of us are also wives, mothers, community leaders, current candidates for city council, not only on our board, but the boards of other nonprofits in our community. We balance, we work, we serve, all with the same like-minded goal of advancing the legacy of building a better Beaumont. If you are a woman and you hear me and you're interested in joining the league, you can talk to me after. Again, thank you for this award. We love being a part of the Beaumont community.
Thank you so very much. And if you'll come around and then shake all of the councilmembers' hands so that I could present you with this proclamation. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you for the work that y'all do. And I love farmers markets. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you. We appreciate all that you do in our community. Now, we have a presentation for Texas Helping Texans Recovery Fund, and Mr. Paul Moore will be presenting. And if you'll come forward and bring anyone that you have with you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Muton and councilmembers. Pleasure to see you and thanks for having us. My name is Eric Simpson, and I am the CEO of Circles X and Texans Helping Texans Recovery Fund. And this is Paul Moore, who is one of our platform division heads. My background really quickly and then why we're here is that we are here on behalf of Texans, and we're working on a project that's gone statewide and even into Oklahoma, Louisiana, and all the way up to Minnesota. And it was a result of the winter storm of February twenty twenty-one. Did anyone in this room lose power by chance during that storm? In that deep freeze? Many did, maybe eighty, as much as eighty percent of Texans did at one time or another during that storm. And sadly, what happened was that there was over two hundred billion dollars lost during that storm as a result of the damage done to Texans' homes, properties, school districts, cities, counties, and going beyond. In that process, my background, just getting into this of, in the losses of what happened, is, I was born in Oregon and then twenty-eight years in upstate New York. I went to Cornell University through graduate school and studied doctorate in mathematics. Came down to Enron, which is an infamous trading company in the history of energy markets, the one that actually deregulated natural gas and, to a large extent, power. One of the sad things that I saw when I was at the company, thankfully, I was young enough to have lost less than I learned, but certainly lost a lot. And one of the sad events I had was in California, there was a deregulation of power. And sadly, there was an energy crisis where Californians lost power off and on intermittently during a whole summer. And it was determined that this is, you know, unacceptable, and Californians lost over ten billion dollars during that summer of two thousand and two thousand and one. And the governor, Gray Davis, even was recalled as a scapegoat for how could this happen? All these power outages and all this lost money allowing this to have happened. Thankfully, even despite the recall, the Attorney General of California investigated further, and it was determined that thirty energy companies had, had ill-gotten gains of over eight point five billion of the ten. And sadly, what they had done was they had set up California as an island where they would buy the electricity rights going into the state, withhold it so that they could control the power and the price, and then they would extract that value from the California people. That was over the next three years through the Attorney General. He was able to successfully reclaim eight point five billion back to the people of California. And so this was a heroic day in the sight of justice and getting right back to the people of California. So fast forward twenty years, I was walking down the street at four AM on a call to London, and my power was out. And so I was trying to get to a place where I had a cellphone coverage for a conference call that I was doing with London. And as I was walking down the street, one of my neighbor's homes was burning. Ninety-four-year-old woman tried to heat her home with, with, with logs and burned to death. And, and as a, and we all have stories in this room. I'm sure everyone has countless stories. To me, when I saw this, typically, if there was what we call a force majeure event where weather or natural acts cause an outage, it would be such that a tree limb fell on a power line. That's legitimate. Nothing you can do. But in this situation, any of us would notice that probably you didn't have tree lines or trees on your power lines. The power just went out. So then the question becomes why, how? And when we did the research after myself and Paul, I think he even had, you know, seven pipes burst in his home, and we fixed people's houses around our neighborhood for the next seven days. And after that, I went back to the databases that I maintained because after Enron, I started a company that focuses on tracking every pipeline flow and power flow within the United States. And I literally hiked, backed, and backpacked and drove every pipeline to, to make a notation of every node in the system so that we can track it. And we did it for investment purposes. We ran a hedge fund to invest in energy. And in that database, and we have over a hundred and seventy patents and patents pending on those energy, you know, related data that we cover, and we had sold it to the energy industry for many, many years. But upon an investigation of looking at that data, it was determined that these same gains that I saw in California had happened here. And so basically, the, the grid is set up so that the Texas intra-state grid is unregulated as, and it's away from the oversight of the FERC. The FERC has only oversight over the intra-state system, which is only on the periphery of the state, which leaves over eighty-five percent of the state unregulated. So this is how you could ask how such a thing could happen without regulation. And the answer is because it's not. And so in this context, in fact, today, I just read an article on Texas Monthly, how our current regulation over the RRC is actually set up so that, you know, there's a lot of profit interest even from the entry, industry over that regulation body. So in context of this, we filed a petition that we just filed on February ninth, which covers most of the state. We have over three hundred thousand Texans that have signed up, businesses, homeowners, and citizens to help us recover on their behalf. And for the city of Beaumont, the county, the surrounding area, your seven school districts, plus or minus, you know, a typical school district is the largest holder of square footage. You know, typically, those claims are thirty million dollars that would be money that was taken from them that should have been given to the schools. For a county, usually, the numbers are similar, and a city are similar. So, you know, easily, it could be determined that Beaumont's claim would be in excess of a hundred million dollars in such a recovery. And so what we do is we partner with cities and we partnered with, you know, currently, we have sixteen percent of Beaumont residents who have signed up to join our recovery effort. And we'd like to see that with your help, over fifty percent, so that the people can get this recovery funds back. It was very sad in that when I've talked to the Texas state legislatures, that this securitization bill, which is over fifty billion dollars of charges to the people of Texas, was signed in four days without anyone being able to understand what they were signing. In the context of that securitization that then has gone on to be passed on to the industry, the other fact of this is that since we filed on February ninth, the Texas, the Kansas Attorney General also filed suit in Kansas, independently of us, completely unrelated, showing that these same events that we claimed in our one hundred and seventy-page petition, which is the most detailed petition that's out there, if you do any research, and we're happy to provide that to you. And in that context, you know, the Kansas Attorney General named some of the very tort feesers that we had as far as it was over a billion dollars of losses to the state of California, and he's independently take that action up. The, I've just talked last week with Bob Anthony, who is the vice chairman of the Oklahoma Corporation Commission, and he's going to work with us to help open this up in Oklahoma with the Oklahoma Attorney General. We've also, we're in discussions with Ken Paxton here. And, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a complex topic because there's a lot of powers that be. But, you know, we have this data that we are, you know, putting forth, and now the media's picked it up, you know, in the Houston Chronicle, to the Bloomberg, to, you know, many other state papers throughout to help get this truth out of what happened. And so, you know, we need your help to partner, to help let these facts be known to the people. And we're here to serve, to help get that recovery as, you know, as expeditiously as possible for you all. It's a legal case. We cannot make any guarantee for the outcome. But we've dedicated ourselves to try to make this right for the people. When I looked at the facts further, you know, it was also apparent to me that, you know, when you ask such a complex word as securitization, which was all passed in a very short period of time, most people don't understand what that even means. And so it is sad to me when I saw the amount of profits that were securitized in that context to understand that the people that are going to pay that securitization over the next twenty and thirty years did not get to vote on, or did not sign a contract to do that. They did not sign up for that. This was imposed upon them. And, you know, these are the facts. And so when I, once I saw that, you know, a, a woman or a senior that was sixty years old is going to have a excess charge of ten to sixty-five dollars a month extra in her bill over the next twenty years to, to this woman, this is a meaningful amount of money, and it's something that she didn't sign up for.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure, Councilmember Neal.
So we're not on ERCOT like a lot of the other people in the state, and we didn't fight the same issues that you're talking about down here. So I don't know how Beaumont or Jefferson County could make a claim on, on this because it didn't affect us like that.
So no one lost power in Beaumont?
Not, we're not on the same grid that you're discussing.
Correct. No, so, but so from right up, you're making an excellent point. So right up the road.
Yeah, people possibly lost power if a tree fell on a line or something like that, but not because of energy cutting the power off.
I have a question also. Are you attorneys?
I am not an attorney. We have many attorneys that work for us, though.
And what is the name of your company?
Circles X.
And where are you out of?
Houston.
And, and who asked you to be here today?
We were invited by Mayor Muton.
I just, I just don't see where this is relevant to Beaumont.
Beaumont citizens, sixteen percent of your citizens have signed up.
But how do they make a claim? They didn't lose power because of the grid.
No, so you have a grid here that's independent of ERCOT?
Yes.
And it had the same issues? And the people here, the price and the Houston ship channel went to over four hundred dollars per MMB.
We didn't go to, we didn't do that here.
Respectfully, I can show you data that shows that that happened here.
Madam Attorney, can you please speak to our rates being set, and they were not adjusted during that?
So the city does negotiate our, our energy rates. And as far as I know, Adam, we haven't received any complaints that there were increased rates based on energy usage during that time. We, we negotiate the rates, and it's based on usage, not on outcome. But we haven't received any complaints outside of that. My office hasn't.
Well, and I know that we're not on the same grid, but even, even people that have lost power, can you speak to the fact, people that lost power, the effect of them losing power, losing things in their home, not having electricity for that time? Can you speak to that?
Yes. So throughout the state, and we're working, you know, there's two hundred and fifty-four counties in Texas, and ERCOT is ninety percent of it, and ten percent is outside of ERCOT. But all those surrounding counties had equivalent damage. And that was simply that the power was out, which means that usually, they lost food in their refrigerator. Secondly, usually, they had a pipe burst in their home quite often as a result, which caused damage to their home. And then lastly, if that good was taken from them and resold to other people at a higher price, for example, this same gas and power was resold to co-ops and munis such as CPS in San Antonio and to Brazos, which caused them over three billion dollars of losses. And so the, the power was taken from somebody that didn't have power. And you'll notice up in Brazos in the central Texas, they had only eight hours of power outages. And so there was an exploitation. It would be one thing if this was done on a uniform basis, but it was not done on a uniform basis. And from a further perspective, the, you know, the prices, as we all know, were never seen before in the history of energy markets. And I'll provide a background analysis for the county and the city of the rates. I'll be happy to do that and provide that. Certainly, the prices, the city was not immune from that. I can show you, and I will. But this is something that if it's not done in Oklahoma, feels strongly this way as well, that if any, nothing is done, the securitization bill, what it does is it also sets forth a standard that anytime prices are to be risen, go up, that that could be passed on without regulatory review to the people. And so that's another reason why if you set precedent and you do nothing, you know, you're setting yourself up for something that can just repetitively occur in the future, which is not in the interest of the people, in my opinion, without proper regulatory oversight.
Okay, and you will be able to provide that information to our?
I will do so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gitz.
What, what exactly are you asking the city of Beaumont City Council to do?
At their discretion to, we, we work with people to either work with you as a partner to help you, your attorneys recover, and we won't charge anything unless it was successful. So it's only a success piece, and we just have a data license that we partner with cities and counties to help them have all this information, which they would other not, otherwise not have. And if nothing happens, you don't have a penny.
I understand what a contingency fee is. Ms., Ms. Reed, do you understand what they're asking us to do? Can you explain it?
To the best of my knowledge, I believe they're asking us to join the lawsuit.
Correct.
Are we, are we proper parties for this lawsuit?
Without reviewing the data that he's assessed, I can't answer that.
I mean, we're, we're regulated down here.
Yes, sir. But if he's saying that there's proof of loss of damages, and I'll just reference some of the previous class action lawsuits that we've joined with the state, the opioid, for example, there was evidence that, you know, our, our area, based on some data that provided by police and the health department, that our area may have been impacted. And so we qualify for that lawsuit. So without viewing the data that he is referencing, I can't really tell you whether or not we would be a proper party or not.
Well, I understand when, like BP had the oil spill, which was a tangible thing that we were affected with in Jefferson County, and there's been other instances where, but if we're regulated down here, I'm just having a very difficult time understanding how we would have standing to even be in a lawsuit of this type.
Yes, sir. So it's a great question. But anyone that has proof of loss, as the attorney said, and we can provide you with that data, and we can provide you with analogous counties' data just so you can see what it looks like in other places as well. But the county necessarily has claims, and we'll provide that data and just a two-page memo for you just so you can outline what your, what your loss would traditionally be.
Well, and this is just information to provide to the city in the event, if we're affected, for us to join the lawsuit, not that we are or we have.
That's correct. This is all at your option for your information, and it's an opportunity to have a recovery if you so choose.
Okay, and you will provide that information?
I will do that. I promise. Yes.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for having us, and we really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. If, when she calls your name, the green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes, and the red light will be your indication that your three minutes are up. Thank you.
I don't have any, Mayor.
Okay. With that being said, may I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
I'd like a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number one? Mr. Boone, please.
Mayor and council, item number one is to, an ordinance, entitled an ordinance approving amendments to the Food and Food Establishments Ordinance Concerning Signage, Sections Ten, Sections Ten Point O Two, Ten Point O Two Point O O One, Ten Point O Two Point O O Two, Ten Point O Two Point O O Three, Ten Point O Two Point O O Four, Ten Point O Two Point O O Five, Ten Point O Two Point O O Six, Ten Point O Two Point O O Seven, Ten Point O Two Point O O Eight, Ten Point O Two Point One Three One, Ten Point O Two Point One Three Two, Ten Point O Two Point One Three Four, Ten Point O Two Point One Three Five, Ten Point O Two Point One Three Six, Ten Point O Two Point One Three Eight, and adding subsections Ten Point O Two Point O O Nine and Ten Point O Two Point O One Zero.
I'm gonna give you a break after I'll let.
Thank you. Mayor and council, this, actually, this, this ordinance was previously heard and approved February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And it included, however, some incorrect chapter references for the amendments being proposed at the time. So we're bringing that back to you with the correct chap, chapter references as read earlier. The administration is recommending approval of the ordinance.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor. Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, thank you. So there's no change in the content. It's just a chapter reference. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilmember Turner.
Can, I know we went over this briefly, but it could be citizens who weren't watching in the past. Can maybe a staff liaison, a staff mention, a staff member kind of speak to the benefits of these code changes to food trucks? Because, you know, often I just want to make sure it's clear that we're doing things to kind of help. Because, you know, often I just want to make sure it's clear that we're doing things to kind of help out the food truck community and not hurt the food truck community. So can a staff member speak to that?
Yes, yes, sir. So let me, I'll read some, some of the language from the, the prior agenda item, which again is, is referenced here today. And again, some, as we talked about last time, some of this language, uh, references directly the state code. So we want to make sure we're in line with that. But I'll, I'll go over some of the proposed changes that are included. Um, again, talking about food trucks, uh, one of the changes is to allow mobile food, food units to purge their crawfish at the central preparation facility. Uh, overnight parking at a mobile food, uh, unit place of business is further defined to specify that a mobile food unit must be stored at a rented storage space. Uh, it defines where the mobile, uh, unit may park overnight until the next business day. Uh, there is, let's see, changes to the special event temporary permit. The current ordinance does not have a specific deadline for the, uh, the permit itself. So what's being proposed is that the special event permits must be submitted and purchased at least thirty days prior to the event. Uh, furthermore, environmental health proposes temporary food establishment permits must be submitted and purchased no later than seven days before the starting date, uh, for the period of operation listed in the application for the permit. Uh, the food permit application, foods are not prepared on site or that they require extensive preparation or cooking. Uh, they must be prepared at a licensed food establishment located within the city limits of the city of Beaumont. Uh, all foods to be prepared and sold during each day of the operation must be purchased same day from a permitted grocery or other retail food store. Uh, food permit holders must display at their entrance of the food establishment a placard approved by the regulatory authority stating the sanitary conditions received at the time of the most recent inspection of the establishment. And then also you may recall, we talked about a new scoring system. So, uh, proposed is a scoring system, uh, what, with a, with a, with a number assigned, one hundred to ninety being an A, a score of eighty to eighty-nine being a grade letter B, uh, seventy or seventy-nine or below being a grade level C. And so that's a, that's a summary of the proposed changes, but we do have, uh, Kenneth Coleman, our health director, is in, is in the audience if you have any additional questions.
Yes, ma'am. One, one follow-up, mayor, if you don't mind. Uh, when you say event and special event, I know you said special event thirty days. Can we please kind of define the difference between event and special event? So, you know, the community can be fully aware.
Yes, sir. I'll ask our health director to.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Yeah, good afternoon. A special event is someone who's hosting the event that's gonna have six or more food trucks there. And so we're asking them to apply for the application at least thirty days in advance. So the staff can be prepared to inspect that many vehicles on a Saturday because we have other, uh, people also applying for temporary events, uh, permits on those days as well.
I have a question. So in the event if someone, the last minute or, of course, you know, it's gonna happen. A week or two before decides they want to participate, then what happens?
Uh, they want to apply for a special event permit, where it just depends on if those time slots are available. And so, for example, when someone applies for a temporary, uh, food permit, they apply, they choose their time slot, right? For example, if you have someone, well, I want nine o'clock, right? So nine o'clock is taken. So if you come two weeks in advance and you want nine o'clock, well, nine o'clock slot is taken. So we'll give you the next available slot. And so that's why we're encouraging people to get their permit in advance, so you choose your time.
But in the event that it is last minute, you will work with them?
We try to discourage last minutes because everybody would come last minute, but we're flexible.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions? Councilmember Gads.
I may have asked this before, but I also want to ask it again today. For things like groups that are doing link sales or, uh, you know, barbecuing, uh, links out there in the parking lot of a grocery store like we see from time to time. Uh, how does this affect them, any of these changes?
Seven days. They just should apply for their temporary permit seven days in advance.
Okay.
And that's just to, because in the past, since there was no deadline, we're having everybody come at the same time, wanting the same time slot to be inspected. And that just made it hard on everybody. And so the idea behind the seven days, if you know six months from now that you're gonna hold the event, you can apply for it now. And then you have a right to choose the time slot you, you want to choose in terms of when you want the inspector to come out and inspect your setup.
So when you talk about time slots, you're talking about the time slot where an inspection's going to be taking place by someone at your office?
For a temporary permit, you apply for the application, but you're not issued the permit until your setup has been inspected to ensure that you have everything you need, uh, to ensure that the food is being prepared safely.
Okay, so if you have several civic groups who's doing something on the same Saturday, it's a, it's a great Saturday to have an event and, you know, you've got places all over town. How many inspectors do you have to be able to go out there?
Well, typically, it's, it's, uh, one at a time that's on call for the weekend. But we have made allowances where we've had other ones to assist because we know sometimes that do happen on certain weekends where you have a whole lot of people want to hold these events. So we do what we can to assist.
So I, what I'm gathering is there could be times where people could be held up from getting started with their.
Well, that's, 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 that's possible. If everybody wants the same time, typically everybody wants to be inspected between seven and nine, right? So, and if everybody want that time slot, that's why we're coming with this hard deadline. That's why we're asking people to, to apply for it in advance. Because if councilmember Turner wants seven and then you come behind him and want seven, right? Well, you can't get seven. We might tell you, okay, seven thirty is available or eight o'clock is available, depending on how long we would take to inspect his setup.
Without these changes, what has been happening in the past?
People getting mad because everybody's coming in for seven and I might get to you at eight o'clock, but you actually applied for seven.
Mayor Pro Tim.
How long does a typical inspection take?
It just depends. Um, if, when you apply for your permit and all the instructions is given to you right there on the spot, right? And also prior to the inspector going out, they actually do a follow-up call to ensure that you have everything you need, to ask any questions that you have. So if everything goes accordingly, it can take anywhere from ten to fifteen minutes. If you have everything you need. And so we, when we say have everything you need, so when the inspector get out there, right? You should already be set up. A lot of times what happens, the inspector get out there, but the vendor is not ready. They have to go back and forth to the store, right? And so, but we have other people waiting as well. So we have to hold ourselves accountable to that time slot as well, so. Uh, but the inspectors do, uh, follow up prior to the inspection.
So like, if you have one of those special events, you can, you can schedule them like every thirty minutes?
Not a special event, because that's six or more.
Okay, well, the, if, on a Saturday and you got, like, you can do it every thirty minutes, seven, seven thirty, eight, eight thirty?
Yeah, if everybody have everything, like they should have it. Yes, sir. I mean, we work a full day on a Saturday. We work an eight-hour shift on a Saturday, if that's what's required.
Councilmember Turner.
Mr. Coleman, do we, do we provide some form of a list so citizens know prior to what to look for in the inspection?
Yeah, they get a packet and it's drawn out as well as in word, exactly what they need is a, is a printout. It's a drawing of, you know, the buckets, what you need to have, why you need to have it, all that's laid out. And we also encourage them to call back to the office if you have any questions. And that's why the inspector will call you prior to them coming out on a Saturday. I'll follow up with you either Thursday or Friday to ensure first, are you, you still gonna hold your event? And secondly, do you have any questions about the setup and do you have everything you need?
Yeah. Well, lastly, I want to thank y'all for looking at it from a proactive approach. I can say, uh, I was, uh, doing a fundraiser with a little dribbler team in the past, trying to raise some funds and travel with the kids. And Justin came out and did the inspection. And not only did he come out the first time, he came back out again, you know, because everything wasn't ready the first time. So appreciate y'all. That's just an example of, you know, you going above and beyond, Justin. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Yes, mayor and council, item number two is, uh, an ordinance entitled an ordinance, uh, amending chapter twenty-two of the Code of Ordinances, sections twenty-two point oh two point oh oh one and twenty-two point oh two point oh oh two. Uh, on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, council had a, held a work session to discuss water and sewer revenues, uh, fund balance and operations. During the work session, a discussion was held regarding the billing rates for apartment complexes and mobile home parks. Uh, section twenty-two point oh two point oh oh one D and sections twenty-two point oh two point oh oh two F state the following for water and sewer service rates. Quote, "Apartment complexes and mobile home parks with four or more units shall be billed a minimum monthly water service rate for seventy-five percent of the number of units at the five-eight inch meter rate. Additional uses above and beyond the minimum usage will be billed based on rates set by this section." Amending the ordinance by removing part D from section twenty-two point oh two point oh oh two and removing part F from section twenty-two point oh two point oh oh two would generate additional revenue estimated to be seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year by charging one hundred percent of all the units the monthly minimum service rates. The administration is recommending approval of this ordinance.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Turner.
Uh, I understand we're looking at this, but we did, we did discuss strategic additional options to raise revenue, like such as outside water rates, kind of, since we're on this topic of something was bringing, bringing us to us from that discussion. Kind of where we, if that's still something we're considering, Todd, Chris?
Yes, I'll ask the CFO to speak to it. I do know that we are looking at, um, a variety of things coming out of that work session. I know one of the things was more administrative and that was the amount we charged for setting meters. Um, and I think we are looking at some other, other, uh, points as well. Todd, do you have any additional information?
Just, um, I think we talked about seven items during that work session. We're pursuing all seven. This is just the first one that needs to come back to council for approval.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Durya.
Did y'all look into the, um, the discount that the prisons were receiving and eliminating that?
Right, we didn't need to come back to council on that one because there's a contract already in place. We just need to give proper notification to the prison system and then move forward with that.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. And Chris, just for clarification, there is a discount for senior citizens above the age of sixty-five in, in this. Yes, just wanted to make sure people understood that.
Yes.
Any other comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number three is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant through the State and Community Energy Program. Uh, the Office of State and Community Energy Programs has announced a call for projects for communities to apply for funding assistance through the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program. The intended purpose of the program is to reduce energy use, reduce fossil fuel emissions and to improve energy efficiency. Uh, the proposed project for consideration consists of redesigning the layout of Magnolia Avenue to consist of one travel lane in each direction, a center two-way left-turn lane and a dedicated bike lane uh, on either side. Uh, the existing layout promotes speeding, which has been reported by numerous citizens and confirmed by a traffic study indicating an eighty-fifth percentile speed of forty-three miles per hour with a traffic volume of about twenty-five hundred vehicles per day. The proposed addition of dedicated bike lanes would provide narrow, narrower travel lanes, which is anticipated to reduce, uh, the excessive speeding issues and as a result, reduce emissions. Uh, the total project cost is estimated to be a hundred and eighty thousand with a let date that is to be determined. Uh, the program will cover, will cover all project costs up to a hundred and sixty-eight, four hundred and twenty dollars, uh, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, rather, after which the city would be responsible for any overruns, which are currently estimated to be at eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty. Uh, again, the, uh, funding source would be ninety-four percent federal and six percent local from the city's capital program. Uh, staff is recommending approval of this resolution to apply for the grant.
Thank you. You've heard the reading. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
So move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Samuel.
I understand that, uh, this is one way, uh, to attempt to slow the traffic down on Magnolia, to make it sa, safer. However, um, are we going to, uh, use, have any special attention by law enforcement while this process, once it's being done, once it's been done? Because, just because they change the structure of the street, it doesn't necessarily mean, uh, residents will adhere to that. They would still be speeding. And that tends to give a false impression of safety. Uh, if they have bicycle lanes on each side and then there's one, uh, one way going each direction, that kind of gives a sense of false safety. So at least we need to make sure that there's some law enforcement to enforce that for a time period.
Right, so i- in general, traffic tends to go faster on wider lanes. And so this would essentially reduce the width of the lanes, add bike lanes, but you're correct. Not, e, the implementation of this project would not preclude police department from continuing patrol. Uh, we're looking at a vi, variety of, uh, possible measures in the future with traffic calming. We're not there yet, but we're still looking at that. But to your point, implementing this would not, would not preclude, uh, the police department from continuing to enforce the speed limit on this road.
I understand that, but that is an assumption, uh, that, and I'm not throwing shade at anybody. There's an assumption that there will be law enforcement, uh, presence. But because of the existing issue of speeding, changing the structure of the street does not necessarily mean particularly, we can't assume all people are reasonable. So we need to make sure that there is law enforcement presence to enforce the new entry of the new structure. Uh, and I'm not saying that we sit back and wait for something to happen. That needs to be a part of this process in the beginning.
If I could, real quick, real quick, Bart, just let me, let me just add real quick, um, a couple of things. One is this, this grant is for an emissions reduction, not necessarily a, you know, reduction in speed, although we think it will, we think it will help. But to your point, we don't, we don't feel like it's gonna absolutely resolve the speeding issue. I think we would, we're gonna have to continue to monitor and force that. Bart, do you have any?
Yeah, the, the road diet alone will drop the speed approximately seven percent. That, that's what we've seen. But to your point, we just recently restriped Sarah. And, uh, we've been in conversation with the police department and operating with them. And they've gone back behind us and helped enforce the, the new striping on Sarah. So some of the citizens were passing in the center turn lane and still speeding. And, and they were very cooperative to get back out there and, and do additional enforcement on Sarah to help, you know, as people are adjusting to the new striping.
I, I do understand. I understand the funding is for energy and not enforcement of speed. I understand that.
Right, but we're doing it to try to help address the speeding on Magnolia because it's been a problem, as you well know, for a number of years.
Yes, and I've had several calls over the past thirty days. Yes, and I've had several calls over the past thirty days about speeding.
Right.
And yet it's still happening. And I would hate to see, uh, that change and then see someone killed or severely injured as a result of a false sense of security.
Well, I don't, I don't think anything we're putting in will give a false sense of security. I mean, I've, I've, i- it should slow them down. What I've seen on, on other implementations of this, if people, if there's not a pack of cars, you'll still get individual cars speeding generally in the lane of travel. Um, and I've seen on Sarah, for example, cars pass in the center turn lane. Haven't seen anybody speeding into the bike lanes, um, or, or anything of that nature. So I, I think if you're worried about the bikers being safe, I think they're okay.
I, I understand the point you're making, but I've gone down Magnolia.
Oh, yes.
And I've had folks pass me. I'm doing the speed limit and they zoom past me.
Yes, sir. I've had the same.
So I have not seen a presence there as the people make the concerns made. I'm still not seeing a presence just there. So the false sense of security is not because the implementation of the new street.
Okay.
The false sense of security is going down Magnolia that, uh, you expect people to understand that's in the neighborhood. But that's not what happens.
Yeah, it's a long street and there is a lot of speeding. Our study in February showed sixty-three percent of all traffic is, is speeding on that road currently.
And is there a difference between that first section of Magnolia from Lucas to, uh, I think it's?
It's probably grocery store.
By the grocery store. There's a change in the type of structure.
Or something like that.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, uh, the first part of that road when you come from Lucas is four lanes, four travel lanes. And.
It goes down to three lanes.
It goes down to two in a, in a center turn lane, though they're very wide lanes and there's no bike lanes. I'm not entirely sure why it's striped that way because, uh, the roadway's the same width. I'm not sure what the rationale for the transition is. But certainly the four lanes on the first part of that road promote higher speeds than, than the single lanes further down.
Okay. Well, I just hope that that is an issue that's taken under consideration.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Gates.
What are the parameters of this project of Magnolia? I mean, Magnolia runs as I, I believe all the way from Calder to East Lucas. Uh, what, what are we talking about?
From the events center to East Lucas.
East Lucas to Laurel?
Laurel, East Lucas to Laurel. You'll have continuous bike lanes. East, East Lucas to Laurel.
From East Lucas to Laurel?
Laurel. So downtown Laurel, past I-ten.
Okay. And the speed limit there is set at thirty?
Uh.
Or forty?
It's thirty-five the whole way, I believe. It's no higher than thirty-five.
So it, the speed limit is thirty-five, we think?
It's thirty-five for sure on the other side of I-ten. If it drops, and I don't have the speed limit noted on the, on the plan, if it drops at all, it would be on the downtown side. But I know it's no higher than thirty-five.
You were talking about how there's a change in the striping. Is, is that the thing that's gonna be addressed by this restriping or, or what, what are we talking about?
Well, for the, for the part from East Lucas, that's four travel lanes currently, it'll go to two travel lanes, a center turn lane and bike lanes.
Okay.
It goes to Gil.
Yeah.
To Gil?
For the part that is two lanes of travel today, but there's no defined bike lane. It'll tighten up the travel lanes, so they're very wide right now. It'll create a true center turn lane and defined bike lanes. So it'll just slightly change the presentation of, of what it is currently, but, but put legitimate bike lanes in place. And then as you get on this side of I-ten into downtown, currently it's striped with sharrows in the lane of travel and no bike lanes. So that'll change to defined bike lanes.
Is it allowed that people can park on Magnolia?
People park on roads today. Yeah, they can still park there.
So when you have bike lanes and you're riding your bike and you come across a car in the bike lane, you have to get into the lane of traffic.
Right. You have to navigate around that.
And, um, that to me is a, is a pretty significant hazard at that point because y- you know, you're, you've got now one lane of travel. And everybody is in that one lane of travel. And you, you, you see a car parked in the bike lane up ahead of you. And you're thinking, oh my gosh, how am I gonna get around that car without getting?
Yeah, and I, I mean, maybe Councilman Samuel can weigh in on this. I haven't seen a lot of street parking on Magnolia itself.
Um, I haven't seen much.
No, it's, it's, it's more of a through street and I've, I've really not seen that be an issue on Magnolia.
But, but it's, but it's not illegal to park on Magnolia, should it be?
As long as there's, as long as there isn't a no parking sign, which along Magnolia, I don't believe there, or any, if so, not much, then you can, it's my understanding you can park in a bike lane. That said, as, as a cyclist, if you're in the bike lane, then you need to take care to make sure when you're going into the main lane of traffic that there's not, you know, a car coming upon you.
Mostly what I've seen are deliveries, mail truck, um, delivery truck, UPS, that sort of thing. I haven't seen a lot of street parking on Magnolia when I've been down.
I, I don't know if this is the appropriate time and probably not for this type of discussion, but maybe at some point we need to address whether or not we should allow for parking on streets that have bike lanes, with possible exceptions for delivery vehicles. You know, bicyclists, you know, they pay taxes too. They, they deserve to have a part of the road that they can travel on safely. So I, I, I'd like for us to consider that at some point in the future as a discussion item.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim Durio and then Councilmember Turner.
As a bike rider myself, it's always hazardous riding your bike. As a responsible bike rider, you have to just be careful. You have to watch out. You know, if a car is parked there and they have to go around it with another car, same thing with a bicycle. You just have to be careful and watch what you're doing, you know? Also, I want, um, Bart, you can confirm this, this same way that, uh, Calder is striped and Gladys? Isn't Calder striped like that from downtown to pass the interstate?
It is with the exception that Calder has raised medians in the middle as well, instead of a center turn lane all the way down.
Okay. And Gladys also?
In Gladys, we put a road diet in. We did not put, uh, specifically marked bike lanes on Gladys because Gladys changes widths and we didn't have sufficient space to have a consistent bike lane with enough width on it, so.
And Seventh and Old Town. Seventh and Old Town also has.
Oh, yeah. Well, just, I just wanted to say, as I ride my bike and you just have to be careful because people, just like a motorcycle, people don't see you. So you have to be careful and take precautions while you ride your bike, even in a bike lane.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
I noticed, you know, Councilman Durio recently dealt with a lot of this on the Sarah Street project. And we're discussing traffic studies. Uh, Bart, I think it's important that we kinda let the community know what all goes on into traffic studies and why. Like, why do we do them and what is the purpose and what goes into them? So more people can know the process because, like I said, I observed Chris Durio deal with this pretty well. And, and his war, and I know it's coming up for this one. So can you please explain why we do traffic studies and what go into them?
The predominant reason, we'll get a complaint, some type of complaint for the area speeding is, is fairly typical. Um, we'll go out and we'll look at the road, we'll put counters out on the road. They used to be, and Tech dot still uses those tube counters that you'll see. I think they have them out all over the city right now. Uh, we've moved on to radar, so it's a little device that hooks onto a pole on the side of the road. We don't have anything that goes across the road. We'll put those out for a seven-day period to gather data. It counts the vehicles going in both directions on the roadway. It also measures the speed of those vehicles on the roadway. Well, we do that for at least seven days and we do it, uh, when school is in session. So if, uh, we try to avoid summer, spring break, Christmas, because traffic patterns change dramatically when school is out. You don't get as, as many cars. And once we get those, that data in, we can see whether there's a speeding problem. We can see how many cars are traveling on the road. And by analyzing that data, plus the crash data over at least the last three years, which is reported to the state, then we can determine what we may be able to do on that road to improve safety.
Thank, thank you. So it's clear that we making these decisions based upon data.
Yes, sir.
So I think it's important that the community knows it's data-driven decisions.
And if we make a change, uh, we go back afterwards, um, on these roads that were doing the striping changes. We'll come back six months after the change and a year after the change. And we'll assess the traffic again and we'll pull those rec reports, uh, after a twelve-month period and see what changes may have occurred due to the change, uh, striping pattern.
And that's where the forty-three percent came?
From the traffic study we did, um, in February, February twenty-second to twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two is when we did this particular study.
Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
So the traffic on Magnolia, um, compared to, I guess, uh, Gladys, uh, Seventh and Calder, the amount of traffic is, is Magnolia traffic comparable to that? Because Magnolia's a pretty busy street. And will, if it is, I mean, will that, will they have traffic jams on Magnolia because of this?
Uh, the average daily traffic on Magnolia, when we did the study, was four-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy cars. So well within the, the limits of being able to go to a single lane. Which I think is over eleven-thousand cars before you get to needing multiple lanes.
So the other streets, Calder and Gladys, they're under that, they're around the same number or more?
They, they were under that eleven-thousand figure. I don't recall what it was on Gladys. I think Sarah was, was pretty close to this number on average daily, if I remember correctly.
Thank you, Bart.
Thank you, Bart.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Item number four is to consider amending Resolution twenty-three dash oh-six-six in support of Abiding Grace, a proposed housing tax credit project located in the forty-two-hundred block of West Cardinal Drive to reflect sixty-one units. Uh, you may recall that this item came before council on February twenty-first. Uh, the applicant had originally requested, uh, a resolution of seventy units. However, has reduced that, uh, number to sixty-one and asking that the resolution be amended to reflect sixty-one units. Uh, administration is recommending approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. To reflect, uh, a new resolution instead of seventy units to sixty-one units. Is there a motion, please? Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
Can you say why the change?
Um, I'm not sure. That's what they had asked originally and then they came back after and said they wanted to reduce it, so.
He's in the audience. If you'll please come forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
Thank you.
Um, Kenneth Law, IT's group. Um, when we came before council, we originally asked for approximately seventy units. The week that we were, uh, putting our application together, we did get architectural design back. Costs were a little bit higher than we anticipated, so we needed to reduce the number of units down six units. Essentially about a one-point-five million dollar reduction in the cost. So that was just kinda where we ended up and needed to reduce the number of units.
So those additional units were one-point-five million?
Correct. With our present construction costs. And there was a lot of site work that we have to do out there as well with the clearing and lift station and some other things that we, you know, increased the budget past what we normally would have to do, so.
And I'm sure with the cost of interior, the inflation has probably played a major part in it also.
It has. Um, the fortunate thing is lumber prices are coming down. So hopefully when we get to the point of closing, uh, which will be, uh, November or so, December first, hopefully those costs will come down some and then we'll have a, at least a more feasible deal. Right now, it's, it's still feasible, but we did have to make that reduction to make sure that everything was in line.
Thank you.
Can, can I speak with you after the meeting, please?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Uh, Mr. Boone, will you please take us into the public hearing, please?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the public hearing today is to receive comments on the amended Public Services and Public Facilities and Improvements line items of the Consolidated Grant Program's twenty-twenty-one Annual Action Plan to include supplemental home ARP or American Rescue Plan funding. Uh, just for the benefit of the public, as well as some background on the public hearing, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and give some additional details before we, we invite the public. Uh, the American Rescue Plan or ARP Act of twenty-twenty-one allocated one-million, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars in supplemental home funding to the city of Beaumont. Uh, the appropriated funds are to address the need for homelessness assistance and supportive services. Uh, in accordance with the Home ARP Grant Agreement, uh, the city may use five percent of the funding for administrative and planning costs. Um, ARP program states that the home funds must be used primarily to benefit the qualifying populations through four eligible activities. Number one is tenant-based rental assistance. Number two is development and support of affordable housing. Number three is provision of supportive services. And number four is acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter housing units. Uh, the administration is proposing to amend the twenty-twenty-one Annual Action Plan to incorporate this funding in order to use the Home ARP funds. Uh, as part of the Home ARP program, public meetings were conducted to take input from our local nonprofit organizations that provide services to our homeless community. It was determined that non-congregate shelter and tenant-based rental assistance, or TBRA, needs were of the greatest priority. Uh, several agencies presented project ideas with preliminary costs and those are attached in your packet. And again, the ca- the administration is recommending that we allocate, uh, the Home ARP funds in the following way, acquisition and development of non-congreg- congregate shelter housing in the amount of one-million, five-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. The allocation of tenant-based rental assistance in the amount of two-hundred-thousand and then ninety-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy for administrative expenses. And again, I just wanted to provide that background information. Uh, this amendment of the twenty-one, twenty-one action plan to incorporate this program into it will allow us to submit our grant program to HUD. Uh, once we get that approval from HUD, we will bring the item back, uh, for formal application and presentation to the council for award.
Thank you. We will now open the floor for any comments.
Mayor, I have one question.
Councilmember Gates.
What would you define non-congregate shelter?
Never mind too.
Right. So non-congregate shelter housing, if you think about maybe a traditional homeless shelter, you have, you may have a bunk situation where you have multiple individuals living in a single room or a shared space. Non-congregate housing is to have separate units, um, for individuals.
Every individual has their own?
Individual or family.
Mm-hmm. Individual or family.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Councilmember Turner.
I see we have the, uh, proposal for funding sources. And I see we actually have some nonprofits that are on here that I don't see any funding proposed to go to those. Is it the particular reason why we have two nonprofits on the list with no funding allocated towards them?
So the final, the final page in your packet is essentially, well, let me back up. So when we did our initial public hearing, we invited all these nonprofits, basically- So when we did our initial public hearing, we invited all these nonprofits, basically outlining the program, and we asked them to provide essentially, again, what priorities do we need in the community, but also what projects might you have a use for the money and how much do you think you would use? So the final, the final list in your packet is not the proposed allocation. We will bring that back to council once HUD releases the funding. This is simply the list of projects and funding that the nonprofits essentially are considering asking for. So there will be a more formal process once we get the funds released from HUD.
Family, my reasons for asking, I was a little concerned seeing family services of Southeast Texas on here, and I didn't see any funding projected to be allocated towards this organization. I know there's been some issues that came forward to us mutual times, and I just wanted to make sure if we had any kind of source, I think it would, you know, be beneficial to support something to that magnitude.
Yeah, and again, this is, these are just their requests. I believe they attended that December hearing, but they did not submit a request at that time. Since then, we have reached out to them, and they they do intend to apply once, once that formal application happens.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember Gates.
Again, just to clarify, this list is requests. That's not what we're agreeing to do today.
Correct. What what we're doing today is simply a public hearing. Actually, next week, we'll bring the item back to y'all, to council, to actually amend the action plan. That will allow us to go to HUD to get the program moving. Once the, once, once the program is approved by HUD, we will bring it back to, we will, we anticipate we'll take it through the CDAC, we'll bring it back to council for y'all to, council to to vote on the final list. So yes, just to clarify, the list in your packet is simply the the list of requests that have been made preliminarily.
So the CDAC met yesterday. Was part of the considerations that they were talking about yesterday related to this?
They've been talking, they're aware of it, they've been talking about it, but again, until we get the release from HUD, we we're not going to run it. We, we, once we get the release from HUD, we will present it to CDAC for formal consideration so that they can make a recommendation to council.
What was the meeting about for you then, yesterday?
Yesterday was to talk about the, this upcoming program year's CDBG budget.
Okay.
Councilmember Samuel.
Prelimarily.
Preliminary?
Yes.
What, what is the top heavy? Is that something you all put in?
I think the note risk refers to maybe having, maybe the the amount being too high.
And the administrative costs?
Yes. In other words, there's an administrative cap on that, and so that would, that would exceed the cap for administrative costs. Yes, sir.
So that, that's a 5% administrative allowance, is that right?
Yeah, yes, sir.
And so the, when you, administration put in the term top hea- top-heavy for any of those administrative costs that exceeded 5%, is that correct?
I believe so, yes, sir.
I have a question, Chris.
Yes.
Habitat for Humanity has to build four duplex, duplex homes. So are, will these be for sale, rental? I mean, who would own them?
Well, it would be for permanent supportive rental units. So it would be rental, and the idea, the idea again is, is this funding is really to help prevent and avoid homelessness. So the idea would be to get individuals or families in those units so that they're not homeless.
Who would oversee those, those units on a continuous basis?
Well, if awarded, in this case, it would be Habitat.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we will close the public hearing.
Did you open it?
I'm sorry.
Was it open?
It's open, yes.
It's open? I don't have anyone that wants to speak.
Okay. So we will close the public hearing. Thank you. At this time, now's the time for public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. Your three minutes, the green light will come on at the beginning, and the red light will be your indication that your three minutes are up.
Charles Moore, 1995 McFadden, Beaumont, Texas.
My name is Charles Moore. I live at 1995 McFadden. I was here last week about a trash can on vacant property. Thank you for following up and calling me back. Appreciate that. However, keeping the trash can there to service it, to stop trash from collecting on the property is not going to work. That trash can has been there since November. It only went out that one time. That afternoon when I left here, sanitation came out, looked at it, photographed the tent and the trash can, and left. What they didn't do was turn 90 degrees and look at the back of the property where all the garbage is piled up. Nothing's going in that can. So anyway, what I realized was that I mistakenly left you with the impression that this is a homeless situation. It's not. This is a criminal thug trying to terrorize the neighborhood. His name is Joseph Chapman. Chapman's family owns the vacant lot. He's there with their approval and support. They bring him supplies, they pick him up when the weather's bad. He has nice clothes, cell phone, his hygiene, personal hygiene looks good. His grandmother had a house on that property, and it burned down long before I moved in in 2008. She believed that someone in the neighborhood burned it down to run her off. Chapman says he's there now to set this right. He screams that daily, top of his lungs, so that's how I know. All my calls to the police have been about threat and harassment. I walk my dog in the same route every day since I bought my house in 2008. That's on the sidewalk, on the vacant lot. He accuses me of trespassing and tries to force me into the street. That's why I call the police. Other Sards employees harasses them, he harasses anybody that comes to visit to Sards for visitations or set up a funeral arrangement. If you just park your car next to the curb, he's off on you. I, last November, at night, he was arrested finally for a weapons violation. I was delighted now that police could finally arrest him. I've been documenting his actions with videos, so I put together a DVD, and I was going to take it to the DA's office the next morning. Chapman was out before I got to the DA's office back on the street. I went ahead and went in. They were not interested in him or my documentation, so I went to the police department. They spoke to me, they took it.
Finish your sentence, sir.
They took it, but he's in jail right now because he went back to ask for his gun. They wouldn't give it to him. He started a fire in the police department. He's sitting in the jail now for attempted arson. The way my luck is going, he's going to be out for time served and be back on the lot. This is not solving the problem. I'd like to basically not have to come in here every week on a three-minute interval and just sit down and speak to somebody about this and show what the scope of this problem is. I know you don't want to see me coming in here every, every week and taking up your three minutes, and, but it's, it's, it's a serious situation in my neighborhood. It's, 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 I'm raising red flags, which I feel are being ignored, and it's like, you know, every week, there's a mass shooting, and people go, well, what about all these red flags that were ignored? I'm trying to do that. It's not going to end good. It's going to end bad.
Thank you, sir. At the end of the meeting, just wait and someone will speak.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I'd be happy to talk to him, although it's not in Ward 2, but it is, I don't even, whose ward is this?
Taylor's.
I'll be glad to talk to you, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, how do I go about setting that?
Well, ultimately, this council's going to have to have a workshop to discuss what we're going to do when you have camping on private property. It's not just at that location.
Oh, I know.
It is at other locations as well.
I know.
Where the owners of the property are allowing this to occur. This is a particularly egregious situation because of the harassment.
This is an agenda, not a homeless.
But the bad part about this situation, his family is the owner.
So we can't, we can't allow for back and forth on an item that's not posted, but Mr. Mr. Moore, you can wait.
We'll get with you. Someone will get with you.
Somebody be contacting me again?
Right, just wait after the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Charlie Crap, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, staff. Thanks, everyone, for your service at the city of Beaumont. My subject today is street resurfacing. I've, I've traveled out to, out west to, around the Baker Road, Umbel, Umbel Road, and I, and I noticed the, there was some asphalt resurfacing going out there, and it makes the roads are very smooth and delightful to travel in. And also, there was a, a mile on Glendale from College Street all the way to Pivot. And that, and I just wondered if that was really necessary, because most of those streets are just community streets, and, and traveling myself, it, it, it's, they're fairly smooth. You get a little few dips in the, in asphalt, but by and large, it's a very good surface. Okay, then we're going to move on to poor-neglected Abilene. Abilene runs from Fourth Street to Jaguar, which is in front of the old Central High School. That street is so rough, so many rough patches, it's hard to believe the neighborhood is not complained. And what it needs is a good scraping and a, and resurfacing. And one of my favorite streets is Pennsylvania from Washington to MLK. Pennsylvania's need of attention is quite rough with a cracked concrete surface. Of course, there's just about one car per minute that uses that street, so it's not highly used, but it is a major artery into downtown Beaumont from Washington. Let's see. Oh, yeah, there's a bad spot on Pennsylvania at the intersection of Quarley, and where drivers must reduce their speed just to maneuver the spot. Rather than make major repairs to the concrete surface, try smoothing out the cracks with asphalt along Pennsylvania. Okay, moving on to the Park Street intersection at Washington, which is, in my opinion, deserves a asphalt patch to give drivers a smooth transition on to Washington. So that is my report this week. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
James Eller, 3587 East Lucas Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon.
Yes, ma'am. Wanted to come to y'all, I know I always come at y'all a different way, and I want to extend out, not just for, per se, saving me, but as of an olive branch, as of my conduct, you know, how I need to conduct myself, you know, professionally. And I understand y'all do have a hard job, okay? I say job, it's an elective position to represent the citizens, and then there's administration that that is supposed to handle the funding and the duties of the city and whatnot. And like I said, I just want to reach out to y'all. I say, I appreciate y'all. I know y'all do have your own ways of doing things, your own ideals of doing things, your own priorities of doing things, considered, you know, same thing, I might like the Red Sox, you might like the White Sox, per se, you know, for an example. I think that there's more of a frustration on my end whenever I try and call something to point, like, say, the water cut off, right? It was Monday through Friday, and now it's Monday through Thursday, and I appreciate y'all listening to that and, and making that a point, right? So now people can come home on a Friday and not worry about being cut off, and then they have all weekend. It's just certain things that I call for that is more common sense, and I just, I would think that the government would be more, because it's local, I would think that the government would be more locally tuned into every small bit, not just the big things, not the, you know, ordinances, not the ways to make money for the city and whatnot, but more in tune with the individuals that actually live in these homes. Nobody wants to lose their homes, right? There's things that need to be done, of course, but there's also time, always, because there's also time with government things that everybody would love to have a, a street repair done, or a opening to a street, or sewer issues fixed overnight, or per se, sidewalks on Washington completed. We have sidewalks that need to be completed, and it's been five to six years since the beginning of construction that haven't been completed over over tracks. And it just, it's certain things that just seem so simple when homeowners seem to be pressured to, uh, uh, speed up and get this done and this and that, and we look at the people that pay for everything to get done in the city, and we ask, why do things still take the same timeline that the city has given us for our homes? And we could have addressed, you know, getting with, like, rural, per se, since they worked so, you know, hard at not letting us do things, we could work faster on getting with them at the very beginning of the construction or before, to make sure we don't run into the problems at the end. But like I say, I just wanted to say, I appreciate y'all. I, I hope to have more time with all the things I have going.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I will have counsel. I think there's...
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and all of the staff. I miss being here. I know you've missed me. But anyway, I have some issues. One is the water department, that you have new guidelines. Information has been lax to the citizens. I tried to pay my account, and it says, take the leading zeros. Well, I li- I read it literally, and it didn't accept my account number. I talked to Mr. Semenow, and hopefully, that'll get fixed. We have a communication department, but the information out to we, as citizens, is not clear in using that system, and maybe I'm just a dinosaur at the, at the computer. So I would ask, and the people that has called me, and we've been talking, if that would be straightened out. The other issue, thank you for doing the streets on Magline. However, it's so thin, we're off the side of the road, and I think maybe enough people complained where more asphalt was put there, but it's put there loosely. So the streets are very thin. Our, our neighborhood is growing, and that's a good thing, but our streets are insufficient. And if you come across from 90 to Todd, you got a street in somebody's driveway. There's more property over to the side going toward the airport that I wish somebody in Street or Public Works would look at. It's an issue. School buses come through there, and, and, and that's fine, but the people... School buses come through there, and, and, and that's fine, but the people, driveway is right at the street. That's, that's horrible. Wineglass Community, whoever our city council is, you need to come out and look, drive at night, and see if you're going to hit a ditch, because the lighting is all so terrible. But thank you for Maclean. It looks nice. And to Beaumont United, they're, they're doing wonderful. And again, I don't understand why we have to wait for a grant to give them sidewalks. It's uncertain if we'll get the money. Beaumont has the money to make sure that those kids are safe, and, you know, every time I pass by there, it's, somebody says, "It's been like that 40 years." You know, the city is responsible for sidewalks, so I would wish that, you know, we move forward on that. And I just have one question, and I'll sit down. Tenant-based rental assistance, how do citizens that rent is able to get the benefit of that? I've asked that question before, never had it answered. Thank you for your service. I know you take a lot, but that's the job that you took on. So, thank you for your service. Have a good day.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Now's the time for council member comment, and I'll start with you, council member Neil. Thank you. Council member Samuel. Council member Phil Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Just Beaumont United, well done. You made Beaumont proud.
Thank you. Council member Turner.
Yes, I kind of like to echo my sentiments with Beaumont United. I was able to actually travel to San Antonio, and if you kind of felt the energy and the atmosphere, it was something I think the whole city of Beaumont should be proud of, and I'm looking forward to celebrating those kids because of what they've accomplished, not only because they just didn't fail short at the championship game, but I still think as a community, it's important we come together and celebrate them. I would like to see all parts of the community there at the celebration. Another thing I would like to do, I'd like to highlight the business community, and even though our business community steps up daily, I think they took it to another level with the Beaumont United championship game. Essence Lounge and Bistro, Madison's, 409, Nell's Place Downtown, and Buffalo Wild Wings, and whoever else stepped up, they all showed the game live. So, the people who couldn't make it to San Antonio to physically be there, they had the opportunity to actually sit together and cheer and have pride in our team locally, and I think it's important that the business community stepped up. Another thing is, I was, I was recently in the neighborhood on Virginia Street, and if staff can kind of look at the lines on restriping those lines, a few people in that community told me that those lines were kind of fading out, so if we can kind of look at those lines, I think it'd be important that we looked at it, because some people are kind of getting confused with the traffic flow. Another thing, I'd like to see the city a lot more aggressive. We looked at sidewalk and grant programs, but it's budget season, and I kind of agree with what Ms. Addie is saying, if we can look at, to be more aggressive with our sidewalks and our grants. I know we're getting ready to start talking about the budget, so if staff can kind of start looking at ways to implement that outside of waiting on grants, I think that'd be pretty strategic. I know this council's going to have emphasis on that. And lastly, Mr. Williams has implemented a system where it's the citizens who come to the microphone, they actually have the process of follow-up. Ms. Tina, you've been doing a good job with it. I've been getting the emails, but I want to make sure we continue to follow up with every citizen that comes up to the podium, and make sure it's addressed. The gentleman in Old Town that came back to the podium, I don't mind sitting with you after the meeting. I know Councilmember Getz said he would as well, but I don't mind sitting with you. But can a staff member, officer, can we please make sure we get with him and get that addressed today? Other side of that, I appreciate everybody. I appreciate the energy, and Mr. Eller, I accept your apology.
Thank you. Council member Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. Like several council members before me, I want to congratulate Beaumont United, and congratulations to you, to Councilmember Turner, for taking the time and going over there and supporting them on the front row. Saw you, and that's great. I subscribe to the game, because I couldn't make that trip, but watched them, and they gave it a very valiant effort. So, we're, we're proud of Beaumont United, and hope some of those guys will matriculate to Lamar University and continue their college, college-playing basketball. So, we're talking about sidewalks a lot today, and I hear a lot of conversation about the need for a sidewalk over at Beaumont United along Fennet Road. I'm here to also say that a sidewalk is needed along Phelan from Westbrook all the way up to Dallin. There are lots and lots of apartments that kids walk to Westbrook, where there's no sidewalks along Phelan. There's, there's the townhouses that are on Prudsmun. There's the townhouses that are on Pinchback. My house is on Phelan. I can be in my front yard when school dismisses and see lots and lots of kids that are having to walk without the benefit of a sidewalk. So, as long as we're talking about sidewalks and needs, there is a need there as well. Again, to the gentleman that's talking about the trash can, or is he, where is he? Is he back there? I'd, I'd like to visit with him as well. We need to do something about that. And, Mr. Semenow, have we changed up our billing cycles for the water customer payments? Because I've been getting lots and lots of concerned citizens calling me, saying that in the last three months, their due date has changed to different days of the month, and each bill that they're getting, it's very confusing and concerning to them. Could you address that for a second, please?
Yeah, my understanding is, until recently, Water Customer Service was sending out bills with due dates less than 30 days, and by law, certain entities have 30 days to pay their bill. So, so all, all customers are given that benefit to pay within 30 days of receiving their bill instead of maybe 15 to 20 days, which has been past practice. And so, in doing that, since it's a utility, and there's different days, different months, the billing date will change probably by a day or two each, each month.
So, going forward, the billing date, I mean, why can't we have a uniform billing date that for each customer's bill? I don't understand that.
Right, there's not 30 days every month.
Okay. So, we can't just say your bills do the first of the month or the 15th of the month?
No, then we wouldn't be getting a full cycle of billing. So, it's like most utility bills do that. You know, mortgages is different. You know how much you're going to pay each month on a mortgage, but utility bills, you don't know until you get that full cycle. So, you have to factor that in, then you have to give the customer the standard 30 days to pay their bill.
Got it. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to congratulate Beaumont United. We're very proud of them, and evidently, they're very proud of Beaumont. I read where a reporter from Dallas-Fort Worth area tried to pick this game as Houston against Dallas, and one of the Beaumont United players said, "No, we're Beaumont. We're 409. We are not Houston." And I was, I was very proud of him for saying that. That shows that our young folks are proud of where they come from, and appreciated that. Also, barring any delays, the bridge on Fennet Road will be open before the end of this week. They're going to have a ribbon cutting on Thursday morning, and we've been waiting a while for that. It's been about a year. So, it'll be open, hopefully, Thursday, with no, if we don't have any delays, so. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Mayor, one more.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz.
We are going to have a Dallin West Neighborhood Association meeting this, this Thursday. It's going to be at 6:30 at the Rogers Park Community Center. We have a new president for the Dallin West Neighborhood Association, Wade Adair. He's going to have a speaker there from the, I think it's the American Legion, so the public is invited to that.
Thank you. Mr. Boone.
Just real briefly, I gave y'all an updated downtown dashboard. You'll notice the needles have moved on a couple items, so just wanted to share that with you. And then also echo what was said about Beaumont United. Very proud of them, and I think we'd all agree, they're champions in our book.
Councilmember Samuel.
I'm not going to go without saying, congratulations to BU for their state championship.
Thank you.
Well, I'm darn sure not going to go without saying congrats to Beaumont United.
Ms. Reed.
Congratulations to Beaumont United.
That was too dry. That was too dry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Ellis. Mr. Barkoviac.
I'll, I'll go along. Congratulations to Beaumont United. Three, three years in a row is, is an achievement, whether they won the final game or not. Congrats.
Absolutely. Mr. Semenow.
Go Beaumont United.
Look, Tina said it even before I called her. So, when you're the last person to speak, of course, congratulations Beaumont United on a great showing, and they didn't bring home the win, but we're so, so proud of them, and there will be a celebration. We don't know the time and the date right now, but we will post it on our city webpage, so look for, for that information. As soon as we get that information, we will post it. There's a parade that is being planned, and as soon as we have that information, we will get it posted. In addition to that, God, after you say Beaumont United, that's, that pretty much almost says it all. But with the comments that have been made about the sidewalks, I'm just going to speak generally, that was brought up today. That has been a discussion that's been long, long discussed, way back when Councilmember Getz Wright and I first put it on the agenda to speak to the fact that students at OZAN, but I could even go back to Hebert, because I graduated from there. We've never had sidewalks, and it's been an issue, and it needs to be addressed. And I don't feel that we do need to wait until a grant. Some way, somehow, we need to collaborate with the district to get that done, not only for Beaumont United, but for Westbrook and any other school where students are traveling, because it's very, very dangerous. As we spoke earlier about different streets and the speeds and the traffic, especially on Phelan and Fennet Road, I mean, they're both four-lane roads and a lot of traffic. And so, for the safety of our students, I think it needs to be a high priority for both the district and the city to come together to achieve safety for our students. So, with that being said, we do not have executive session today. Thank you, Mr. Boone, in the absence of our city manager for sitting in today. Our city manager sits on the Board of the International City Managers Association, so he is out of the country attending a conference, and so that's why Mr. Boone has sat in today in his place. We don't have executive session, and so we are recess, and thank you for coming, and go out and adjourn. I'm sorry. I said recess. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming. Go out and spread the love. Bye-bye.